We're gonna call the St. James Parish School Board Meeting to Order. Opening of meeting, we're gonna have a prayer by Diana Cantillo, Pledge of Allegiance by Tim DeTillier.
Heavenly Father, I give you thanks and praise for today, and pray with hope for tomorrow, especially seeing our young adults in our audience. I give you praise for these young gentlemen that are just unbelievable, giving us hope for the future of the United States of America. I pray for our students that are getting ready to take, let them focus on the test that's coming during the end of the year, and especially prayers for our teachers, that they can, and the principals can initiate beautifully. In Jesus' name, I pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
C, we have a roll call by Chris Kimball Superintendent.
Ms. Cantillo?
Here.
Ms. Washington?
Here.
Mr. Grohl?
Here.
Mr. DeTillier?
Here.
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Mr. Pochette? And President? And President Nicole Flora?
D, discussion and approval of meet minutes from March 11, 2025. Can I get a motion? Motion by Raymond. Second by Coach Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Two, committee meeting reports. A, Executive Committee Meeting Report of March 31, 2025, Chairperson Nicole Flora. The St. James Parish School Board Executive Committee met in the School Board Meeting Room on Monday, March 31 at 4:00 PM. Members present, Nicole Flora, Angela Washington, and Marty Pochette. The purpose to review the tentative agenda and set the agenda for the April 8 School Board Meeting. It was motioned by Marty Pochette and seconded by Angela Washington and unanimously carried to approve the agenda for the April 8, 2025 School Board Meeting. It was motioned by Marty Pochette, seconded by Angela Washington. The meeting adjourned at 4:20 PM. B, Policy Committee Report of April 8, 2025, Chairperson Sue Byer.
The St. James Parish School Board Policy Committee met in a School Board Meeting Room today, Tuesday 8 at 4:45 PM. Members present, Sue, Nicole Flora, and Tim DeTillier. The recommendations made were motioned by Tim DeTillier, seconded by Nicole Flora, and unanimously carried to approve revised policy CDAE, Electronic Telecommunication Devices. Two, motion by Nicole Flora, seconded by Tim DeTillier, and unanimously carried to approve revised procedure IDDFC, Cameras in Special Education Classroom. Number three, motion by Tim DeTillier, seconded by Nicole Flora, and unanimously carried to approve policy EDDB, Walkers and Riders. It was motioned by Tim DeTillier and seconded by Nicole Flora to adjourn the meeting at 4:55 PM.
And motion to accept the next. Motion by Sue. And seconded by Angela Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. Number three, recognitions. A, recognition of congratulations to Raymond Grohl and Sue Byer for their years of dedication as President of the St. James Parish School Board. Superintendent Kimball.
Thank you, President. At this time, I'd just like to, number one, just thank Mr. Grohl and Ms. Byer for their years of dedication, not only to the School Board, for the years of service, but also their time spent as President of this Board. Being President is sometimes a lot of time-consuming, phone calls with me, and I do appreciate the early phone calls or late-night phone calls and just their leadership through their times serving in that position. And their leadership didn't go unrecognized, and I definitely appreciate it as much as I know the rest of the Board appreciated you guys' leadership during that time. So I thought it was appropriate that we recognize that with me coming in and kind of start something where we do recognize our Presidents moving forward in the dedication that that position holds. So I just thought it was appropriate to do that, and I'd like to present you guys a plaque of appreciation tonight. And just from me to you, thank you very much, and I appreciate how you worked with my staff as well and within the school system. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I just want to say I really do appreciate y'all's leadership. You guys have been so helpful to me. Every question that I have and just reaching out and helping me along the way, and I do appreciate it.
Thank y'all. It's a blessing.
So if anybody else, you're welcome to speak, but I'm gonna go up here and get the flags ready.
Thank y'all very much. Very nice.
I'd just like to say thank you to Superintendent Kimball. Like I said, I've worked with two different superintendents and two different boards, and I appreciate you guys' support while I was President, and also regarding the community, the teachers, the administrators, everyone in Parrish actually. We worked as a team in those years, and you guys know we had hurdles across, and I think we did a fine job in overcoming them. So thank you all.
Yeah, thank y'all so much.
B, recognition of congratulations to the Lutter High School Paraquats Dance Team, Sue Byer.
The Lutter High School Paraquat Dance Team received numerous honors throughout their competition season this year. Their highest honors include being named Varsity Poem Regional Champions and then National High School Open Champions as well as National High School Poem Champions. Congratulations to these outstanding students for their multiple national rankings. And while given this recognition, I think it's only fair that we announce that their Director, Ms. Danielle Matherne, is Louisiana's State Director of the Year. Y'all used to taking those pictures. Congratulations, y'all. Congratulations, Danielle.
C, recognition of bookmark artwork contest winners for National Reading Month, Sarah Forsyth.
Alright. So for the month of March, we held a bookmark artwork contest for National Reading Month, and we have our winners from all grade levels. It was an extremely successful, sorry, an extremely successful competition with almost 170 artwork submissions. So it was very successful, but we do have our winners. I'm gonna go ahead and present those at this time. Whenever I present this, guys, you're gonna get a certificate, but I'm also going to give you your bookmark, okay? These bookmarks will be presented to all students and staff across the district. So that was kind of our first. Alright, so first up, we have Lyric Ferry. First place, grades K through 3, from St. Louis Academy. So we'll have y'all come and take a picture, and then we're gonna also take a group shot after. So we'll just kind of hold off to the side. Alright, next up, we have Juan Harold, who is K through 3rd grade, 2nd place, from St. Louis Academy. Alright, next we have Carter Gravwa, K through 3rd grade, 3rd place, from Vachery Elementary. Alright, so next category is grades 4 through 6. We have Aubrey Jones from Gramercy Elementary. Alright, grades 4 through 6, 2nd place, goes to Harrison Koppenex from Cypress Grove. Alright, next up, we have Rain Beck, grades 4 through 6, 3rd place, from Gramercy Elementary. Alright, next up, we have grades 7 through 12. 1st place goes to Ayanna Dennis from St. James High. Alright, grades 7 through 12, 2nd place, goes to Jevaya Becknell from St. James High. Alright, and last, we have 7 through 12, 3rd place, goes to Lexi Vicner from Lutter High School. Alright, guys, we'll do a group picture now. Alright, guys, congrats.
Four, Business Finance Instruction. A, informational presentation from Salute First, Superintendent Kimball and Cecile Jones.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening. Ms. Cecile is here this evening to do a presentation from Salute First. And just, I was fortunate enough or honored enough to be able to attend their end-of-year celebration that they had probably around 2 and 1/2, 3 weeks ago, give or take. And just, it was an amazing time to see all the students represented from the different school systems and surrounding districts. But I'm very proud to say that we had both of our high schools represented there, and looking forward to even more representation moving forward. So Ms. Cecile, I'll turn it over to you, and thank you for your dedication to this program. And we are definitely seeing great benefits because of it. So thank you, Ms. Cecile. So the floor is yours.
Well, you know I'm gonna give the floor to the keys.
Okay, yes ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. First off, I want to thank you for allowing us to be here today. It means a lot. Oh, and don't worry, this isn't one of those long 2, 3, 4, 5, 10-hour presentations. It only take about a minute. And we timed it twice, so don't worry. This presentation is about gratitude and giving you a chance to see who we are and what we stand for through Salute First. It'll only take about 10 minutes of your time.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're kicking things off with a quick video from the Salute Global Gala. The night was powerful. It really highlighted us and the heart behind everything we do. So sit back, relax, and pretend that y'all watching the Oscars, but better. Now the video.
Stay tall.
Yeah.
Dream big.
Yeah.
And we will be a part of the revolution.
They are new legends.
This is what we do before.
This is the reason it's hard to do this.
Good evening, esteemed School Board members. Some ask, what do we learn in Salute First? Well, let me tell you. Salute First teaches us leadership, discipline, and self-worth. We learn communication skills, conflict resolution, and how to navigate the real world with confidence. We are challenged to think critically, take responsibility, and see beyond our circumstances. If you want to see that level of impact, take a look at me. You know, one of the most powerful lessons that I've learned while I'm in this program was in Lesson 3. And that is that we all make mistakes. Every single one of us. It's not that mistake that makes us. It's how we come back, how we bounce back from that mistake. That's where the growth happens. That is where our character is built, and that is where we stand on this program. Dr. Taylor doesn't just teach us leadership, he teaches us resilience. We learn how to take accountability, how to bounce back, and how to move forward stronger than before. That's what Salute First is all about. My mindset has been changed. It gave me purpose. It showed me that my voice does matter, that I do have something to contribute, and that I am capable of leading. So when you ask, what does Salute First teach us? The answer isn't just in the curriculum. The answer is the students stand before you, transformed and ready and prepared to lead. Thank you, Ken Brass, for believing in what we can do through this program. And thank you Superintendent Chris Kimball. And thank you, every single person in this room that believes in us. I am Decade de Bourgeois. Salute.
Good evening. How's everyone doing this evening? Before I start my speech, I would like to say I am very honored to be here a part of an organization, Brotherhood like Salute First. Without Mr. Taylor, this wouldn't be possible. Without him, I wouldn't be standing here today, and I thank you for that. I would not take, I would take, I would not take the opportunity for granted. All love to him and my brothers to the left and the upcoming brothers in the back. I am unapologetically me. People see me through different lenses. Some admire me, some misunderstand me, and others may define me based on their own views. But no matter what they think or say, I know who I am. I may not be perfect, but I am me. I have made mistakes, but I am learning. I am growing. And at the end of this day, I'm still standing. I am unapologetically me. Not here to fit into anyone else's box, but here to walk in purpose, lead with truth, and grow into the best version of myself. I may evolve, I may learn, but I'll never lose the core of who I am. I am proud to stand here today as a student of St. James High School and Salute First, grounded, focused, and unapologetically me. Thank Ms. Oo, my family, Mr. Ken Brass, Superintendent Kimball, the community of St. James and St. James Parish School Board members. Your commitment to Salute First is the reason I'm standing in front of you. Thank you for the opportunity. I am Marquis Cooper, unapologetically. Salute.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us. My name is Tyler Trigg from Gramercy Elementary. We are not just students, we are the future leaders. Every lesson we learn and every word of encouragement helps us grow into doctors, engineers, teachers, and creators of tomorrow. But we can't do it alone. We need support from our teachers, our principals, our families, and our leaders like you who believe in us, love us, and salute us. Superintendent Chris Kimball, thank you for believing and making sure our schools give us what we need to succeed. With your leadership and our hard work, anything's possible. When you invest in students, you're not just helping St. James Parish, you're helping shape the future. Look at us, we are the future. Salute.
Excuse me, Superintendent Kimball. May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
In your opinion, what is the most precious resources in the world?
I'm looking at them right now.
Some might say gold, diamond, or even oil. But I believe the most valuable resource is something even greater. It's us. We are the most precious resources because when you invest in us, you invest in the future. Salute.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First off, I would like to thank the School Board Office for giving me the platform to share my thoughts and experiences on today. I'm honored to stand before you today as a representative of Lutter High, St. James Parish Schools, Salute First, and as someone who understands the power of leadership, hard work, and setting an example for those who come after us. I'll just get right to it. Superintendent Kimball, if it's okay with you, I want to be that guy that the younger generation can look at and see that anything is possible. You see these sixth graders inside me? I was once in their shoes. I once had the same dreams, the same ambitions, and the same questions about what was possible. And just like them, I needed someone to believe in me, to guide me, and to remind me that I had the power to shape my own future. If it's okay, Ms. Raymond, and Ms. Tara, and Superintendent Kimball, I would love the opportunity to communicate with these students as a resource, a guide, and a living example that dreams are not just dreams, they are blueprints to reality. To the sixth graders behind me, stand up. Dream big. Dream huge, actually. No setback is too large. Your behavior, your academics, and your choices will shape not only your future, but the future of those around you. Strive for excellence in the classroom. Treat others with respect, and never be afraid to set a standard for greatness. I am a leader, and I want to take a moment to thank the School Board for giving me this opportunity, not just to be here, but to stand boldly in my purpose. And my purpose is to lead. I am Amara Scott. Salute.
How y'all doing? As a young person, I could have been anywhere right now, sleeping, scrolling on my phone, or just goofing around. But instead, I choose to be here. Showing up is important because every opportunity, every lesson, every moment of growth starts with a choice. Choice to be present, to be engaged, to take action. I showed up today because opportunities don't wait for anyone. You have to step up and be present. I showed up because every time I do, I grow, learn, and I move one step closer to the future. I showed up because every time I do, I grow, learn, and I move one step closer to the future I want. We all pushing everything we do to be the best we can be. And when I say push, I say pray until something happens, or give everything you got, no excuses. Success doesn't just come to those who wait, it comes to those who show up, and who put in work, and who refuse to quit. I want to take a moment just to thank Mr. Chris Kimball for allowing Salute First to approach us. And I'd like to thank Ms. Nicole Florent, Mr. Marty Poche, Ms. Diana Cantillo, Ms. Tim Detillier, Mr. Sue, Ms. Sue Burr, Ms. Angela Washington, and Mr. Raymond Grohl for supporting us through Salute First. It is working, and as you can see, that's coming from me. I'm Cade Malashia, salute.
I want to thank everybody for allowing the students to come. It's very touching, as you can see, their thoughts, they always tell me, Ms. Omar, we just want to be heard. That's it. And as you can see, we definitely give them the opportunity to be heard. Want to thank the principals, you know, I'm always bugging them. Can y'all, can y'all, and they always saying, alright Ms. Cecile, come on. So I just want to thank everybody for believing in the program, for believing in these young men. They talking about them all over, trust me. We had a call, we were on a Zoom call, like two days after the gala, and it was actually on a Sunday. And they reached out, and the boys who were speaking, they're trying to set up for them to come to New York to tell their stories. And I want to thank all of you, because it would not be possible without you. So thank you. And we have the sixth graders who have something special to give to the board, and the principals actually. So Lenisha, if y'all can come up, Sean, Mr. Ken Brass, because y'all know he believes in us, right? Come on, Ken. I promise the call's gonna stop, it's gonna, no, I ain't gonna call y'all too much. Okay guys, everybody that have a bag, bring it to the board. And sixth graders, stand up. I don't know how we gonna get this picture, but we gonna try. And Superintendent Kimball, they all wanted to come, but we just had to put the numbers a little lower for you. Yeah.
Y'all come back anytime.
That was so nice.
Thank you, Ms. Cecile.
Cecile!
I'm sorry. The inscription, definitely from the heart. What does it say? Help me out, help me out.
It says, "May you be proud of the work you do, the person you are, and the difference you make." And it's on the little board, the pin.
Thank y'all.
Take some good notes.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, thank you.
And a keychain.
Nice, nice. Thank you.
B, Discussion of a Resolution of the St. James Parish School Board in order to approve or deny Air Products &amp; Chemicals Incorporated for participation in the Industrial Tax Exemption Program. Superintendent Kimball and Steve Nasaka.
Thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'd ask Ms. Ashley Muntz to come up and Mr. Steve Nasaka to present this item for discussion and a vote.
I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Steve, so he can kind of go through what it is, if y'all have any questions or anything.
Thanks, I only hope to do as, as good as those speakers just now. For Air Products, is a worldwide company in the production of industrial gases. And they're also, excuse me, a leader in the decarbonization of industrial gases in the world as well. For, they have been, excuse me, located here in St. James Parish for over fifty years. They recently invested a hundred and eight million dollars in expanding their hydrogen production facility located at, on Shell Convent's property. So inside Shell Convent's fence line is where that's located. They have, so, and they have asked and applied for the, for participation in the industrial, the state's industrial tax exemption program. Excuse me, I was doing fine before.
It's all good, take your time. You need some water, we can get you some water.
No, no, we'll do it again, I'll be, I'll catch up. But for all of that, with them, a hundred and eight million dollars invested in expanding and restarting their steam methane reformer that produces hydrogen on Shell Convent's property. And just as you have approved in the past, these same industrial tax exemptions for, for people like Shell, like LSR, Mosaic, and others, they're asking for participation in the program. It provides them a tax benefit of an eighty percent reduction in property taxes for the first ten years. And just as, just as you've approved, the others were asking for approval for this tonight. Keep in mind, over these fifty years, they've been taxpayers here in the St. James Parish. They participated, thanks so much. They participated in support for, throughout the community. They've been, they've been business partners and leaders in the parish, and we're asking you for consideration of approval. School Board, excuse me, the parish council approved this last week. The state of Louisiana has already approved it, Louisiana Economic Development, as well as the Board of Commerce and Industry.
So yes, we're gonna have to move to take a vote. Do we need a roll call on this?
I would take one.
A roll call vote on it. Ms. Cantillo? Ms. Washington? Mr. Grohl? Mr. Detillier? Ms. Byer? Mr. Poche's absent. President Florent? The motion passes. Six yeas, one absent. Did we take a motion, Mike?
Yeah, you just, somebody needs to make the motion and second it, but the vote's fine. So whoever wants to motion.
Our motion.
Sorry about that.
It's okay. Motion by Ms. Byer, seconded by Mr. Detillier, and unanimous approval.
Thank you. C, Discussion and Approval of a Resolution Appointing a Representative of the St. James Parish School Board for the Industrial Tax Exemption Program, Superintendent Kimball.
Yes, this new process that they're presenting through the state, the school board, as well as the parish council must appoint a representative of each. And then also, the sheriff is the other, the third person on this committee. So I'm gonna have Mr. Steve Nasaka explain this new process in, in regards to ITEPs and, and moving forward. This comes down from the Governor Landry when he became the governor, so. It is a recent executive order from the governor, and it establishes a, a new process for approving ITEP exemptions. Still, the companies like Air Products apply to the state of Louisiana for participation in the, in the tax exemption program. It is a result of their new facilities or expansions of existing facilities, they ask for this tax exemption. What occurs is Louisiana Economic Development sees that application, they review it. If they, if it meets all the criteria, they move it on to the Board of Commerce and Industry, which is an appointed board with representatives from all over the state. Should they approve that, they then send it locally for, for, for the parish where it's, the project is located in, to either recommend approval or denial of those ITEP benefits. The governor's change has been to streamline the process in that, in the past, just like this one we just brought to you, required resolutions of, resolutions from the, from the school board, or from, from the, from the parish council, and the sheriff as well. Now, he's streamlined that process in just having a representative from, from the school board, a representative from the parish council, and the sheriff form that ITEP, local ITEP committee that, that, that makes that decision. Streamlines process certainly doesn't, doesn't change much in that regard because it'll be incumbent upon your representative, you know, to make sure that, that person briefs you on the details, make sure you're aware of what's going on, allows lots of room for questions and answers. But for all of that, that's how that process works. The other piece to make sure you know is, it's, is that with this change, the governor's, the recommendation of the ITEP committee is not, what the executive order says, it is advisory to the governor, not determinative. Which means the governor can do what he wants with, but, but it does give the, it still continues to give us opportunity to give input, and if we choose to approve or deny, we can always go to Baton Rouge. And, and, and make sure we, we meet with the governor as their representatives to make them, to make that, our, you know, our approval or denial, make it known.
Thanks, Steve. Mike, do we need to read the resolution word like out, or can we just make a motion?
I think you just make a motion.
And a roll call vote after which says, yes?
Yes, sir.
Ken, for clarity, or for precision, excuse me, the, I think the, the resolution reads that Superintendent Chris Kimball would serve as your representative on that, on that ITEP committee.
Motion by Raymond Grohl, seconded by Diana Cantillo, all in favor?
We gotta take a roll call vote. Ms. Cantillo? Ms. Washington? Mr. Grohl? Mr. Detillier? Ms. Byer? Mr. Poche? President Florent? Motion passes, unanimous, one absent.
Thank you for putting up with my sign.
Thank you.
It's nice to see you.
Thank you to see you.
Thanks, thank you.
D, Discussion and Approval of the 2025-2026 Salary Schedule. This item aligns with Priority Four of the Board's Strategic Action Plan, Kelly Cook.
Don't do it today, guys. I know, but it's just uncomfortable sitting down there. So we have before you today a memo regarding the 2025-2026 Approval of the Salary Schedule Book. This book is borrowed to you after about a two-year process that was broken down into two phases. First, Phase One was the compensation study, and we did this in conjunction with LeanFrog Consulting. Phase One was the compensation study that we completed in summer of 2024, which assessed the current pay structures and market competitiveness of our positions in our district. Phase Two is the salary schedule development that we started in the fall of 2024, and it focused on creating the revised salary schedules for all employee groups. The new salary schedules were designed to improve the overall competitiveness of compensation within the St. James Parish school system. And the key features of the revised schedules include alignment with the level of responsibility and complexity of each position, consistent and transparent step placement based on verified experience, and standardized percentage increases between steps within each salary structure. I can tell you as the HR, Chief of HR here, I am very excited because this will be a great recruiting tool, I think it will also be a great retention tool. And also, you know, also for our employees, you know, who, you know, my, our department, everyone here supports. We are very thankful that we were able to work with LeanFrog, and with the board and the superintendent to get these revised schedules. So this is the revised schedule book. It will be, our next process is to still, and Ashley talked about, we're still cleaning data. But we will have in letters in hand to all employees, no letter, then may one, notifying them of their new placement on the salary schedules. And once that is done, the book will be published.
Motion by Ms. Diana Cantillo, seconded by Raymond Grohl, all in favor?
I have one qualm to make. Second year I was on the board, I heard that we had the conflict. The first year we had conflicts about the salary schedule, second year we talked about it, third year we would do something about it. It's year like ten right now. Thank you, thank you Superintendent Kimball, and, and team.
Yes, because I will, you know, Ashley and I, this will make it much easier for us. We're not gonna sit down and be like, okay, you know, it's just so much, it'll be, it's welcome.
I just remember day one, our first board retreat, telling y'all, when looking at that salary book, I was like, we have some work to do. I knew it was gonna take us some time to get it done. But thankfully, with the hard work of these two ladies, and LeanFrog as well, we were able to get it done, and, and some of our other executive staff members. So I appreciate their work, I appreciate the board's support, and I think our employees are gonna be very appreciative as well, so, thank y'all very much.
I know, it's so beautiful.
So I am excited, and I want to restate this, should have something in hand by May first, so everybody's, is very understanding of what their salary will be moving forward, so, it's gonna be good.
E, discussion and approval of the following certificates of payment. This item aligns with priority three of the board's strategic action plan. Ashley Munster.
Good afternoon. Tonight I bring before you, I have one certificate of payment, it is for God Hopkins Construction for the Lucha High School Gymnasium renovation. If y'all have passed there, y'all can see that there's some, some work that's already going on there, actually moving quite quickly, between the outside and the inside, actually, they have a lot of stuff going on there, so this one is the first payout for that project, it's in the amount of a hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-one dollars and sixty-eight cents, so we're asking for approval for that payout tonight, so we can pay that one out.
Motion by Tim DeTillier, second by Angela Washington, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
F, discussion and approval of District Attorney annual funding. This item aligns with priority five of the board's strategic action plan. Kelly Cook.
Yes, before you board again, this is for our DA Council, currently Mr. Michael Calarba, who we all have a great working relationship with, and happy to continue, so we're just requesting your approval to continue the, the funding for the district's attorney office.
Motion by Raymond Grohl, second by Sue Byer, all in favor?
Aye.
Have great respect for our audience.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for always being so available and helping us through the tough times, we appreciate you.
Thank y'all.
G, discussion and approval of contract between St. James Parish School Board and Jennifer Jones. This item aligns with priority four of the board's strategic action plan. Ms. Nakabudro.
Good evening, board, I come before you just to ask for your approval for a contract between the school board and Jennifer Jones. She is a licensed occupational therapist, she would continue providing services to the students in our district. Of course, the numbers have increased for occupational therapy services, and we did have a therapist that no longer could do two days for us, she could only do one due to some illnesses, so I'm asking for your approval for that contract for Jennifer Jones to start providing services as soon as possible to our students.
Motion by Raymond Grohl, second by Tim DeTillier, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
H, discussion and approval of an agreement with Imagine Learning. This item aligns with priority one of the board's strategic action plan. Ms. Simone Labat, not in the tip.
Good evening, I come before you asking for approval to enter into a contract with Imagine Learning. The contract upon approval will be funded using state funds issued to the district for the purpose of high dosage tutoring, which continues the learning for students from the core instruction. The scope of work aligns to the funding guidance that states, that the districts receive from the state, and of course, our vendor is approved by the state. Based on the contract, three hundred and ninety-two kindergarten through fifth grade students can be provided fifteen days of small group targeted instruction for about thirty minutes a day, provided by a certified teacher before the end of the school year. So we're kind of trying to get this approved, so we can do one last boost to students before the end of the school year. Services, services will be provided through an online platform, and we have this all pretty much situated through their iPads, and grouping with, of course, working with our principals. The state is planning to provide funding for this initiative, this high dosage tutoring, again next year, so this implementation would be kind of like a pilot for us, to figure out if something like this would be beneficial for us to be able to use as we kind of work through this again next year. So I go ahead and ask for your approval.
I just, real quick, before we get vote on this, I want to make sure everybody's under the understanding that this is not general fund, fund dollars, that this is state dollars that were appropriated just for this specific reason, and if we don't use these dollars, we don't get to keep them, the state takes them back, so I'd much rather have our students benefit from this than give it back to the, to the state in a, in a different, and they do something else with it, but anyway, I just wanted to make sure everyone was clear with that.
Motion by Diana Cantillo, second by Angela Washington, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, closing of meeting. A, condolences. We have Eva Dumas-Russell, mother-in-law of Tiffany Russell, speech therapist at Paulina Elementary School, Mary A.T. Stewart, sister of Vandra Stein, retired director of special education, Lynn Moose, Edward Trossclaire, supporter of Lucha High School, Lionel Avery, senior, father-in-law of Tara Avery, principal of Sixth Ward Elementary School, Annie Marie Johnson, mother of Latasha Johnson, teacher at Sixth Ward Elementary School. I get a motion by Raymond, unanimous second. The adjournment, motion by Raymond Grohl, second by Tim DeTillier, all in favor?
Aye.